Yo, we living in the world where the shadows creep. Got the government watching every move, no sleep. They got their eyes on us trying to keep us in line. But we stand tall, ready to redefine. Who you calling when the system's going wrong? Good citizen media, we the voice in the throng. You people unite, we the force that they fear.
Ladies and gentlemen, great to see you. Welcome in.
What do you do when the man is corrupt? Can't call the law, they all in the cup. We rise up strong, we won't back down. Government watchdogs taking back the crown. Charges fabricated, they throwing the heat. Run us through the courts, but we can't be beat. They trying to silence us, but we got the truth. With every beat drop, we reclaiming our youth. Standing our ground, we the ones that they chase. But we push back hard, running this race. No fear in our hearts, we got the power to fight. Illuminate the darkness, we bringing the light. What do you do when the man is corrupt? Can't call the law, they all in the cup. We rise up strong, we won't back down. Government watchdogs taking back the crown. So when they come knocking, we answer with pride. Good citizen media, we won't be denied. You people together, we rewrite the script. Standing for justice will never be clipped. So raise your voice, let them know we're awake. We the watchdogs, we got what it takes. The government trembles when we take a stand. Together we rise, united hand in hand. What do you do when the government's bad? You call on the truth, you call on the rad. Good citizen media, you people in the game. We the watchdogs and we ain't playing tame.
All you bad government actors, we see you. We're watching. There's nowhere to run, nowhere to hide. Accountability's coming.
What do you do when the man is corrupt? Can't call the law, they all in the cup. We rise up strong, we won't back down. Government watchdogs taking back the crown.
Good morning, everyone. This morning, I'm in Benton County, Colorado, for the commissioners meeting. We have two new commissioners seated this morning. Should be pretty interesting. It is due to start at nine AM, so two minutes from now. Appreciate you guys all being here. With Jay Mills, Wendy Burks, John and Paula, you people, appreciate you guys. So they're just muted right this second. I think they're gonna be starting here shortly. Get it going, see what they have to say. Looking at the, looking at the time, I'm getting like, oh, we got two minutes still, guys, we got two minutes. That's funny. I wonder if Jake will make an appearance today for us? Possibly, maybe? If you're Jake? We shall see.
It's gonna be a couple of minutes here. He's got like two minutes to go before nine.
Okay. Everybody's there. Again, thank you all for joining. Just keeping our eye on, on different counties, different cities. And you can learn a lot just from these little meetings. Appreciate those thumbs up. I'll say I'll grab them. We are live on both channels. Good citizen media and you people, free press. Uh, yeah, I believe these guys are paid. How much? I couldn't really tell you. It varies when we cover so many counties. But I do believe they get a small amount, yeah? Alright, here we go.
This meeting is being recorded.
They can hear us and recording is in progress.
So last time they forgot to unmute, so hopefully.
I call the January fourteenth meeting of the county commissioners. We are now in session.
Otherwise, might have to do our thing.
First item of business today will be the reorganization of the board. Do you want to hear any nominations for the chair?
I'll nominate you, Alan.
This meeting is being recorded.
I will second that nomination.
It's been moved and seconded, and Alan's got the chairman.
About to unmute again.
All those in favor?
Sadly, it's kind of common with these guys.
Any opposed? Alright, uh, for vice chair.
I would nominate Bill for vice chair.
Do I have to?
Well, I guess I, you should put it down. Alright, I second.
Let's see if I can get their attention.
Been moved and seconded, Phil Hemphill be vice chair of the board. Uh, all those in favor?
I.
I. All opposed?
Possibly.
Bill is vice chair. Uh, meeting day.
Is everyone still good with the first, second, and fourth Thursday?
It seems me.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with that, so.
So we'll leave those alone.
Okay, we need a motion or, okay. Uh, boards and appointments.
Excuse me? You're muted.
You're not muted? Oh, we're not? We're not muted. I can see the microphone, everything's there.
Well.
Yeah. Right, unmuted.
Alright, guys. I'll let them know.
I just muted it again. Curtis, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
So Curtis, can you hear me? I can hear you, yes. Have a good citizen. Can you hear us now?
See if I can try to refresh on it.
Alright, now can you hear us? Now can you hear us, good citizen? I don't know what's going on right now.
I'm not sure.
Oh. Yeah, good citizen, good citizen, he's really too on. Curtis is here and good citizen cannot.
Is it possible that he needs to go out and record and go back in?
It's possible, but I can't, I don't want, I don't know.
They're not muted now. The icon would say muted.
Uh, put him in the chat.
I mean, I can try, but the chat, even though it says they can use it, doesn't seem to work on their end.
I wonder if they can at least read the message and they just don't have the ability to respond about it.
I don't know, let's find out. Chat.
That's all, so.
What the heck is going on here? Why is it not working?
Yeah, it's live right now. I was in Benton County, Colorado. But we got it up.
There we are. Now I can't. I don't want to message the commissioners though.
It was them and us.
Good citizen.
Hey, you're good now, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Can hear you great, thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, so. We ready?
Alright, so let's do the board appointment space. She here.
Okay. For the record, the good citizen, Alan was elected chair and Phil was elected vice chair of the new board of county commissioners.
And we kept our meeting dates on the first, second, and fourth Thursday, so.
Alright, so board appointments for 2025.
So, everyone that is up this year, of those Conservation Trust, look around, he does not want to be on there. Jordan Mallard does not want to be on the fair board. Morgan Clark and John Thomas don't want to be on the healthcare center. And we didn't get a reply back for tourism. That was the previous administrator who was on the tourism board. So, my suggestion is to put the current administrator on the tourism board.
That sounds good, so.
And then everybody else wanted to still continue to be on the boards if they're on. So we just want to leave.
Uh, ask for all the yeses and then deal with the notes?
Yeah.
Alright. Do I hear a motion to approve all of those who have expressed an interest in maintaining their board position?
I will.
And I will second it.
Moved and seconded to approve all of those who expressed interest in maintaining their seat on the board. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Okay, so all of those that expressed an interest are remaining on the, uh, let's deal with.
I'll put it in a minute.
Yeah, she can make it sound good.
Then the ones that said no.
Go through one at a time.
I will. Post that, opening some of those boards, and then if you just want to point to the tourism.
Yeah, okay. It appears that our former county administrator was a member of the tourism board. Uh, do I hear a motion to appoint our current administrator to that board?
I would motion for Doug to be added onto the tourism board.
So, moved and seconded to move Doug on to the tourism board. All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Uh, Doug, congratulations. You are now on the tourism board.
He expects great things.
And so, and then Linda will host the positions that are open.
Um, the fair board, we have two applicants. Is there two seats to fill?
Yes. Yes, and that's on for the next meeting.
Okay.
We treat now, table it, that happens one, but. I don't want to do that with him. Yeah. I mean, we can do it every month, I don't care. We can table it, so we have a chance to talk about it, since the network hasn't had a chance to think of it. Yeah. When we get to that. Yeah.
The positions.
Yeah, so now, let's do the tourism.
Isn't Rick Ward retiring?
Yeah, but he's there till another month, so.
Yeah.
We're.
We'll retain him in that position.
We'll retain him.
Till. Yeah.
What's twenty days, is that what?
Yeah. Um.
And you can just read those off.
Read those off. Appointed positions are human resource officer is Sean Cardinelli, finance officer Tiffany Rader, social services director John Parker, county attorney Nathan D Schultz, Roden Bridge West End Kevin Van Aegmond, Roden Bridge East End, Marty Canfield, veteran service officer Rick Ward, uh, emergency preparedness coordinator Lisa Smith, budget officer is G Douglas Banker, head of maintenance Chad LaBarge, and the newspaper will be the Benton County Democrat.
I motion to approve the 2025 appointed positions.
Been moved and seconded to approve the appointed positions for 2025. All of you in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Motion carries.
You're now your commissioner of laws.
Okay. Commissioners on the, will be on the following boards.
Everywhere.
Commissioner Stump, Sage, Sabria, immunity corrections, lava, retask, Southeast Recycling, housing oversight committee, Benton County Healthcare Center, Southern Colorado Economic Development District, CCI Legislative Rep, and LAVC Housing Authority. Commissioner Hemphill, SECED, Southeast Council of Governments, TPR, Benton County Community Center, Benton County Law Enforcement, Arkansas Basin Roundtable, and the Benton County Economic Development. And Commissioner Schofield is Benton County Public Health, Vale, SECED, uh, CCI Legislative Rep, Alderman, Rosada, Region Nineteen Opioid Response, CSU Extension Advisory Board, and Benton County Economic Development.
We need to, I still want to mention the CCorps board.
Uh, CCorps?
That's the one that Kim was on.
Yeah.
Is that the, the Region Nineteen Opioid Response? I think it's the same thing. Cause I've been attending those meetings and everything that they have sends it out as CCorps. So I believe, but I believe that is the same.
Let's still appoint her anyway, cause I have the time slot, but she was appointed, so.
Okay. And that actually, they have a new chair for that too, so I can go here and all that, and go to.
She emails me.
Oh. Oh, okay, yes. Yep, that's perfect.
Okay. Disappointed. Just made a separate motion after we still pointed to that.
Okay.
Well, there's also two boards that Jennifer and I both on, that.
They, they actually like to have two representative committees.
Just make sure it's gonna be.
Yeah, and they're, that's the way it was with Kim and.
Well, and I believe that we have to fill those spots and be appointed to it, and then if we do have somebody from the community that is interested in them, we can always reappoint somebody to take our position once we have somebody in line. But in order to fill the spots that are currently being taken up, I think we need to go ahead and, and fill those, those current spots.
For that, that's easy, maybe.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And.
And for the Benton County Economic Development as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want both those, you know, may I transfer both the houses?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought the economic development required would be commissioner.
Uh, I think only one commissioner has to be on there, and then it can be somebody from the community. So if we can find somebody else from the community to sit on that board, I believe, we can clarify.
Yeah.
But my understanding was that it only had to be one commissioner, and then it could be a community member, a business owner, uh, somebody that.
Okay, the, I thought the economic development board, they've had two from the city, two from the county, and they were commissioners or county. Senate council, I mean, I want to clarify.
We'll have to clarify, absolutely.
Yeah.
No, I don't want to get wrong. I know that it's easy to be the, it only has to be one commissioner and then a community member can fill it. So, I would like to encourage as much community involvement as possible for them to be on these boards, just so we have complete transparency on what's going on on all these different boards. So we will have to clarify, like you said, for, for the economic development.
Okay, so, I will, I will, we appoint commissioners to their respective boards and list them here.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the list of membership of commissioners and all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Then.
Now we need to see for one.
Oh, yeah, through the CCorps one, since we have.
Alright. Do I have a motion to approve the commission to the CCorps board? I will move that point. Okay, my second. All those in favor? I, um, any opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
So, that's.
Now we're on the revolution?
Now let's go and do, so, I have two, and then Kathy has four when she comes, okay? So we either wait and do my two right before first, or we can do my two now, and then whenever you have yours.
I would say this, yours are one and two, so might as well.
Okay.
Or get it out of the way, whatever.
So the first one is compliance with the open meeting law.
Okay. We have, or do we have a motion to approve resolution 2025, a resolution of the county of Benton, Colorado, relating to the compliance by Benton County with the Colorado Open Meetings Law?
I will, we approve resolution 2025-ish one.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2025-ish one.
And both of these were roll calls.
Okay. So. I. Hemphill, I. Schofield.
I.
And. Motion carries.
Let's do the second one, and then we'll be.
Alrighty.
The next one is, so the next one appoints some of the people we already appointed, but we always do a separate resolution of these ones.
Okay. So, we now have resolution 2025 dash two, resolution of the county of Benton, Colorado, appointing positions related to the conducting of regular county business for 2025. Do I hear a motion?
I would motion to approve resolution 2025 dash two.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 2025 dash two.
That's also a roll call.
And it is a roll call vote, also, Stump. Yes. And Bill.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries.
We need to do the person's.
Uh, I first.
My second.
I'm changing that one, so it's back and forth, back and forth.
Oh. So, sign. With copies.
So do I, initial on the, or do you write?
It's gonna happen to me.
I don't have any. Yeah, we can do that. So don't need to scratch that out and just sign next to it. I'll just go and do that one. I'm doing the other two.
Yeah.
Yep. I didn't even think about that.
Sorry.
No, it needs to be the original.
That's alright. You have to add my subject line.
I'm giving you the word again.
Thank you.
Yes, cause I, I, we reported one on it, but I always. That's a mint one.
It looks blue. You have to give it a stop.
Yeah, blue.
I don't have blue.
No.
That was the memo that they get to her for the first meeting, blue pens all around. I should have known.
Were those three pens that were in the computer case, were they blue?
I think, so I think they're all black.
Okay, we got that.
It's probably the blue. Looking in the snow, it's black. Aw, people, everybody's in black.
This one's blue too, if I. Neither.
Okay.
That one.
So.
We got them all set.
I think it's me behind, but what's on the thing, what's this one? Someone. One, one, pass.
We appreciate you all being here. Thanks for hitting the thumbs up. So on the left is Schofield, she's new. And then in the middle there's Alan Stumps. Uh, he took the chairman position.
Yeah, I signed everything.
Chairwoman resigned.
I did that all night.
And then on the right there, in the suit, that is Hemphill, I believe. He's also new.
Hey, I got a question. Is the chairwoman that resigned the same one that had $200,000 worth of checks written in her name?
Uh, yeah, I believe, I believe that was in her name, yes, yes. I believe so. And she's, yeah, she's no longer there, so. Alan Stumps there in the middle took her, her place. Now he's the chairman. So. Just the three of them there for the Benton County Commissioners. So. And then lady on the far left, that's Linda Moss.
I need one wrong.
Yeah, probably. Oh. Make the motion and.
Or you can sit there, not this, not the best way to do that. You were here, you know, you were.
Right, we were friends, like we weren't part of them.
I had read that, and I would sit there after.
Yeah, and basically, there are the minutes whether you approve them or not, so.
It's just a.
There were minutes whether you approve them or not, so it's just a big.
Now I saw something.
Even one of those was very complicated. Like.
Okay. Make sure all of it's done anymore. Yeah, they haven't gotten a public comment yet. I mean, they're just, just getting going, so. I'm not sure if anybody's gonna be there for public comment or not, or. If, uh, Jakey, Sheriff Jakey will make it for a report. We'll see.
I don't know about you, but I would be questioning where two hundred thousand dollars walks away. You know, nobody's batting an eyelash over that.
So now we go back.
Well, I'm the minutes and.
Yeah, so I would. They, they make a motion.
Okay. Minutes for the January seven and January second meetings, uh. I'm moved to approve those minutes. I'll second.
Mark.
Been moved and seconded to approve the meetings, January second and January seventh. Uh, all of them in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry.
I was up at that. That's why I was looking and making sure it didn't do something else in my email. I'm like, really? That was it?
Nothing.
The one we've all recommissioners sign. Yes. So. Oops, and see that one.
Not much to that one, no.
No, I think the one you're looking at, I have made a copy of it, no. So I thought it last time and it surprised me. Is that your first name? Yes, is it really? Okay. That, that kind of made me laugh when I saw that.
That sure does. I found my friend. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, when she first went back here, I didn't realize that because I'm people find her stuff in the thing and it's like, yeah, and the cameras. I gave it to them.
We need, we should approve it before. All right.
Are we building payroll together and we do?
Yeah, we can. Yeah.
Actually, want to make comments on, okay, is there anything you want to comment on being that you've seen these more regularly? I know Dylan, I've only seen the last couple, so if there's anything that stands out to you that.
On payroll, it's pretty normal, um. The, uh. And Tom Duke, we, it was done so that we could get it, get on a. Get the files done. Kim could do the filing on that grant before she left. And, uh. So. Nothing extraordinary. Well.
Then I have a motion to approve the bills and payroll for, we just say the week of or. Nigel. Okay, I have motion to approve bills and payroll.
Second. Been moving seconded to approve the bills and payroll. All of the favor.
I. Hi.
Any opposed? Okay.
Sometimes depending on how the leader is tall, there's a whole bunch of, so.
Yeah.
Certainly the one state.
Four or five pages of bills and. Sometimes two different separate stacks and. So. And we kind of break apart. Okay, men moved and seconded. We grew bills and payroll. All of the favor. I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carried. January.
That was a wait. Okay.
Yeah. No.
You need that. No, we don't have them. There is only dated once or each. I just wanted to, just so they know.
Yeah.
I guess it's just one page.
One. Yeah.
It's been a while, my last time. It's gonna be like every time, everybody's on time, it's okay. Well, I have pens, they stuck down very colors.
Maybe that. Kathy knows that we're running.
So, well, what we need to set March.
Yeah, I know we got the meeting dates.
And since I stuck that here more on there.
Oh, okay.
And I will need to so less staple it.
Yeah. Okay, uh. Saying March meeting dates.
It's thirteen twenty seven. That work for everyone, uh, would work for me.
I believe. I think I'm going to put those dates. Yes. You got anything with that date?
Well, that is interesting. February and March near each other. Yeah.
Yeah. We have February sort of already said.
Yeah, February, we have. It's thirteen and point that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Miss anything? All right. And then fair board letter of interest.
I would move that we table the decision on the fair board just until the new board commissioners have had a chance to. To talk over the applicants and look over their letters. I know, I think we had seen them a while back, but I haven't seen it recently to remember. Who the applicants were and what their stance was on how they thought they would benefit the board.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded to table the fair board letters of interest. To a later date.
Uh, the twenty third, the meeting on the.
Yeah, the twenty third, okay.
I think I'm saying that correctly, but that's our next one. Yes.
Okay. Uh, all of them in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
I'm guessing you already have that been on for the third of the. Yeah, that's what I wanted. Yeah, I just. We moved it at one point in time and it probably was just sitting in most spots.
Okay. Thanks, sir. She won't see.
Ready for me?
Yeah.
They're a little spooky here, so. I've got a pile.
Yeah, you usually do longer.
Of course, I know. Well, we had an extra one this year. I don't know where you want to start. Start with. This. Lane Jane one. One, three, one. You want, you have a side sign one. Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So twenty twenty five dash three. Yeah, three. My starter. Alright, thanks. Maybe. Oh, man. Well, I have a certain.
Okay.
Who is? Making resolution. So allow you the best funds, yes. Stop bringing.
Is it supposed to say recognition?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty two.
Yeah. Oh, it should say three. It's my.
Oops.
Oh, I got a five in my phone.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. We got in black, yeah. Mm-hmm. Like as soon as I did that, I'm like, no.
Probably pull that.
Oh.
Which phone?
Oh, it's the highest volume I ever opened. Oh, it's silent.
And okay. We have. Resolution twenty twenty five dash three, uh, resolution authorizing criteria to invest public funds. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move, we approve resolution twenty twenty five dash three with direction.
By the second.
Okay. Been moving seconded on resolution twenty twenty five dash three. All of them in favor? I.
I.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries.
We sign all of them or? Yes, but she wants one and I want three. Right. Although I will send you. Okay, so we'll actually be signing four of them? Yes.
You're coming to the gentleman in the paper.
Right?
Yeah.
Keep asking it the wrong directions. We need one more.
Yeah.
That could put color in the sign. Huh? Can you, can you handle color? Is it purple? Uh, no, I don't have one. You know what it was? My favorite color.
Do we have, did we get all four?
No, we've only.
Three, three.
That is the other one. Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry. I was making sure I was grabbing the right one and not the wrong one. She mentioned bringing a booth in, when you go in with them.
I don't know if I have.
Well. I think those at the conference. I like these. Yeah, I don't like that company, but. Yeah. Yeah, I have multiple. Grocery, you know, bags, you know, they started giving those out at conferences and like I have every color and. Hello. Okay, so then we're on four?
Yes.
Okay, this is a two pager. There's the commission to sell. Actually, it's the November for N K tax, uncollected taxing.
Well, they're kind of weird. Actually, they're difficult to sell or whatever.
Yeah, they changed the law of ours.
Again.
Ah, she gave it to you to give to me. All of us. Thank you. You're looking right. Because when they pass a certain temperature, I'm like, good, going in a very.
It's done now.
Or you have to add ice to it and turn it into an iced coffee. It has to be more. No, I don't. Make iced coffee. No.
You thank Sean for the pins.
No, Sean. We will.
Okay, so we have resolution twenty twenty five dash four. A resolution of the county event Colorado authorized in county culture to assign county hill taxing. Do I hear a motion? So.
I have a second, sorry.
Okay, been moved and seconded. To approve resolution twenty twenty five dash four. All those in favor? I.
Oh. Do that. Hi.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carried.
Does that matter? I mean, okay. Did I spell your name wrong? Yeah, one X. You're good. I, yeah. I'm very traditional.
We have six.
A lot of times I'll have people add the.
We have a six.
Yes, we do. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a new one, that's true. I don't like this one. It's kind of a bit old. I will, I'll get used to it.
Oh, we, they have five out there.
It's a new one. This would benefit the county significantly.
Do we have? Do we sign for?
They're all on the phone. You guys broke in fast. Great. I think I only have to do this one to your first part. I'm excited about the new one. Jen was telling me a little bit about it and I thought that's really good.
I was looking, apparently I have five, so. You had my. Very tense.
That one.
We're just keeping on that number five. They're bigger and bigger.
Oh, we got five. Oh, we saw five, yeah, five and then six. Okay, sorry. Yeah, you're good. Did I steal that one? I just gave you.
Yeah, there's, yeah, we had five or. I'm yelling, I guess it's Simon's.
Yeah.
We put five. Let's see. Uh, okay.
The standard one. With motion to accept resolution number twenty twenty-five dash five, the canceling certain inflectable taxes levied on personal property, including but not limited to mobile homes in Big County, Colorado.
Sure. Been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash five. Uh, all of them in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion or carried.
Well, we just give the animal to you.
These are the ones I like, but they're the straightforward, simple.
Yes.
Nothing crazy in them that I have to watch out for.
Did you get one of them? You ever tend to just wear it and do this every year?
I know.
We got one more copy?
Of number five?
Yeah, we're missing the fourth copy.
Oh, you have. Nothing is mentioned.
So the gist of number six is that we've just found out that normally if we have overbids on foreclosures and or treasures needs, we have to auction now. Very long explanation on that, so I'm not going to go into it, but anyway. Um, normally we would hold those funds and if we couldn't find an order, we would send them back to state Colorado to state payback. But this resolution allows us to hold those funds for five years in an interest-bearing account. And then if no one claims them, the county gets them. So, um, we have a twenty-two thousand dollar overbid that we're sitting on and we have just sold a tax lien for I think another twenty-eight thousand dollars overbid. And so this resolution basically says that anything that's unclaimed that the county's holding, we can keep.
And then if they claim it, do we, we just keep the interest, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can get the interest. But so we'll, I will have to go open another account at the bank to hold the funds in.
Yes.
And we'll just have to monitor it and after the time period lapses.
It's five years.
Go back to accounting. So that's, I like that one.
Yeah, this is a great resolution because.
It's all ours.
Our county, our properties, it's great for that money to be able to stay here and keep benefiting our people in our county. It shouldn't have to be sent back up to the state for them to decide what happens with it.
You know, I know what they do with it. They have to hold it for a certain amount of time, I'm sure.
Right.
But.
And I'm sure that.
I would rather have it.
They get their cut.
We try to grant it. Five years, we can have.
So we can put back into our.
Now, does this just allow you to do this or?
That also involves the sheriff's department.
That's what I saw there was.
Okay.
And any unclaimed property that they are holding.
Thanks.
Only five years? Wow. Then we go to the county. Yeah, okay.
In the bit.
Okay.
That's what that's basically about.
All right.
And if you see, I want to read all seven pages of it.
That's a lot in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got that from Douglas County and their public trustee, there is a lawyer. And so they did not want to leave anything out. We trust her and paperwork pretty, pretty thorough. We did make a few changes, but.
Okay, so. Yeah, very, very motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash six, a resolution adopting an abandoned property policy.
So moved.
So.
Been moving seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash six. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
This one's just you as well, just.
Yeah.
Just me?
Yes, Linda and Wanda.
Yeah, I did test everything.
You don't ever get a break. I guess I could have taken the other one too.
Thinking that is something you get twice a year for me, so my annual report, basically that's all the funds that I collect. What money and what their balances are. At the end of the. We will also be getting at the end of each month, I've done a fund balance. And each, you will get a copy of that. That's so you can kind of see as things as it goes month to month.
Thank you.
Can you regularly send mine, uh, electronic?
My phone is good.
Yeah. If I run into something I need, I'll print the pages out.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's fine. If you, I mean, that's, it's, it's a lot of that.
And yeah.
I have a huge stack of paper. Yeah.
And then what do you do with it when you're done? I mean, I know.
Shred it.
I usually put it.
It's like we have to paper all the chatty.
Yeah.
David, is this one we accept or is there a different terminology on this one? Or is it just that?
It's basically just the semi-annual report and you.
Okay, so we can just approve it.
Yeah, and then, um.
All right.
Then we need to give it to somebody that have a wish it has been published. I am trying to either bumping it.
All right. So. Do I hear a motion to approve the merger semi-annual statement? I will move with some annual prior to report.
I'll second that.
Now, moving the seconded to approve the second semi-annual statement. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any? Any not there? Motion carried.
That is your phone.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll sign on these.
Well, I don't know. Yes, I probably do need two of those.
Yeah, I need one. She needs one, so. I'm gonna kick hand and I'm to you. Oh, Lindsay, you got.
What each? All roads lead to hell. Oh, there it is.
Yeah, we need that last one too.
You, buddy, you have a copy or we'll make a copy or something. Do you want another copies?
Yeah, as we decide them back.
Oh, you're a pretty blue one.
Yeah, they're very bright and colorful.
I've seen all red.
This, you get quarterly, it's my, um, public trustee. Quarterly report. Public trustee is the function separate from the treasurer to me, and I elected, I am the public trustee. Um, there's two offices more or less involved. Um, public trustee is the piece where I do release receipts of trust and forecuers is the main um, function of a public trustee. So this is basically my report for the last three months, uh, releases and cultures, really. Um, the foreclosure numbers are on, you know, each transaction, but that doesn't tell you who they are or. And speaking of that to you and I can call it to my niece. And we have had, um, I am finishing up number eight for twenty twenty-four and already started one for twenty twenty-five. So it's been a little busy foreclosure wise. Just.
How many did you have in twenty twenty-three? Any?
I think I had six or seven. It was, it's been pretty consistent. Yeah.
The leader of the same thing you see in the Democrats.
Yeah, I have to, I have to advertise five times on a foreclosure and, um, you know, some of them, I, you know, small town, you know who they are, what's going on. A couple of them are deceased. But I think three of the one I'm doing are deceased. The last one I started in twenty-four. Um, I've got a question to cure, so it probably won't go even to advertising. So you just. They will, they're in the process. Sometimes they go in the end.
Okay, so. Do I? Your motion to accept? The submit new public trustee for quartering work. All those in favor?
I'll second it.
Then moving seconded to approve the forecurer report of twenty twenty-four. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Well, so I need one and she needs.
Yeah, so two, you sign please.
Yeah, which two are getting signed, so? Like it's binary. Right, I'm like, if you both are starting then.
Could be these two.
Yes, those two are getting signed.
Yeah, they look similar.
You guys wait for me. I don't know, still didn't sign that. Okay. I thought we did.
I think I should have signed that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said it.
No.
I signed it twice.
You said it twice.
Oh. Do we have a spare?
We do.
Yeah.
We do. I have five of these.
I don't know what you're looking at.
They're not really huge amount of information.
Here's the purple. I mean, it's not a bad purple though.
Fiable, I can, I can my claim. No reviews and everything else in purple.
Are we thinking your copy?
The other one.
Oh, the, I'm. Oh, you mean the um, semi-annual?
Yeah.
It means, yeah. I mean, it's more big than that.
Yeah, so you're gonna take your copy to her?
Yes, do.
Okay. Okay.
Send this to me if I'm correct.
Yeah. Anyone interested? Those who are. Good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's tell them to come in here. They're ready. They're talking.
We paused it for a second.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna pause for a moment, you guys.
The recording has stopped.
What the hell?
Looks like somebody had to take a pee break.
I guess. It's not.
Wow.
Yep.
How did you, uh, I, I didn't get a chance to take a look. It's been a busy day. How did the follow-up meeting go?
Well, it was short. They, they really rushed. They really, really rushed. Um, I think the workshop went longer than the meeting, so.
Well, I'm gonna have to go back and take a look. My meeting lasted three hours. It started at six-thirty and ended at nine-thirty. And I gotta tell you, it was a nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only good part about last night was the uncomfortable factor. You know, when you show up.
So I'm curious as to why they got us muted when the cops coming. So there's, there's, there's three cops there.
That Jakey?
Yeah, Jakey. Snow. I'm on a hand. Chopping at the bit to get in here, they said. Yeah, that's now. Here we go. Let's see if they got said.
I don't think the under sheriff likes me.
Yeah. The one, the one on the far end, he was trying to be, that guy right there, he was trying to, uh, be the police chief in Walsenburg.
Oh, is that the guy?
Yeah.
He's the one under investigation or no?
Hmm. No. No, not the one under investigation, different guy.
Oh, okay.
They had multiple people apply.
Well, I gotta be honest with you, it's tough keeping track of all these gypsy cops that keep bouncing.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that same one, yeah, he used to be here in Los Angeles County. Yeah.
Wow, makes you wonder, right?
There it comes. Come on, Al. Get it in gear. There we go, guys. Let's see what the sheriff's got to say.
Did he forget to unmute us?
Hmm. Nah, he's getting ready to. He's thinking about it.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, we're back in session. And we are ready for the sheriff's report. Uh, we have sixty-five in a very certain. I'm gonna break down what you're saying.
Construction's going well. We'll have a meeting with Corbinus today. Camera should be going over to next month. So we should be. So we should be, they've already started the cameras. So, so we're hoping that they'll be all done in next month. But they did start that yesterday, so there's a little bit of a hiccup because we're still waiting on the, um, server room to get finished, but Eric is thinking we can have the server room done this week or next. And then once that's done, then obviously Martin can bring all the equipment into that room and we can really get that project rolling. So right now we're just, um, plug and plant, replacing cameras that were already existing that we're replacing.
And then still done minus the halo system.
Yeah.
So the expensive part of that has still not been done. They're waiting on the halo system. Um, I don't know if they're gonna make the cameras operational without it. Probably fully operational.
It doesn't sound like it will.
So break down on the inmates real quick. We have one, two, three, four DOC, one Pueblo County. And then one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, thirty, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, forty one apparel, and the rest would be that count, I have a sixty five. I mean. So we, we did talk to DOC the other day. Um, we should be having a meeting with some of the higher ups within the next, I'd say, month, we'll call it month. Um, to try to set up a contract with them for beds. Um, they did say that sometimes they, they do it by person rather than bed, but we're hoping that at a bare minimum, we do half of the fifty that we're looking for on a bed, so that we were, were paid for that bed no matter what. And then do the other half based on people, which either way they dumb or all things they can keep us around that thirty to fifty mark anyways, anyway, so we should be fine with that. And people have me, it doesn't seem like why I have anything else there. They did a walkthrough with us, um. Their, some of the supervisors for parole, they did a walk through with the jail with us and said that they think that we're in the right direction, that we shouldn't have an issue getting a contract set up with DOC, so. That should be good.
Hey, you wanna give my prepared statement?
Anything else? Um, I'll stop for SSL. So our SSL and security certificate for our website, um, was not paid and it lapsed. Um, so our website got hacked. It is completely down. Um, I have Brody, our jail lieutenant is our most tech savvy, he is attempting to fix it. Go Daddy wants approximately two thousand dollars to fix the issue. So we're trying to fix it in-house at first, um, but we do need our security certificates back. Um, that way, they, they were auto paid off of our credit card when the credit card went away, all of our security for our website went away.
The firewall wasn't closing, we had to watch, you know?
Hmm, it just wasn't paid.
And why wasn't it? No reason.
They didn't tell them that it was watching.
And I'm assuming that when they took our credit cards, like Jake was saying, it was auto paid on that credit card. When they took that, it got shut off.
And Stephanie did request for it to get paid.
I did request for it to get paid, just a little bit. I don't know, it was just waiting too long. Did you guys ever sit down with administrator and have a list of this is the stuff that's auto paid? It's gonna get bumped.
It was kind of an all of a sudden thing whenever this happened. We did attempt to tell them these are all based after they sent emails. We have all those emails to track. So nevertheless, I am going to attempt to get our, um, working through Sean to get our SSL back up and running. Um, but Go Daddy will not authorize the SSL or our security. The, the problem is our security would have covered this hack, but since we canceled our security, we basically ran a bad bucket to fix this. Would be my guess, unless Brody's way more magical on the keyboard lane. I'm hoping he is.
Helping with your background in H stuff, you never anything? Maybe we can get you to work with Brody and see what you guys can come up with. To see if we can fix this internally.
I can probably get to with him.
Yeah, probably. He'll probably figure something.
Okay.
The domain has been attacked, that's what.
I think it just happened.
A month ago.
Four to six weeks ago, so.
It was probably longer than that, even maybe even. It was right as soon as the SSL latched, like November, maybe. Uh, we've been trying to fix it ever since. It's just, we're not exactly, our, our tech guy doesn't do websites, does computers. Um, so we're attempting to get our site back up. We've had a lot of complaints, mainly our, our tickets are paid on our website. And our inmate information is really popping page for all of southeastern Colorado, because most inmates are delivered here. Um, so we're, we're losing a lot of traction. It does currently take you certain times to inappropriate nudity websites. Um.
Just don't go to it right now.
Yeah, don't go to.
So the two thousand dollars that Go Daddy wants, is that for them to fix it and get it back up and running? Or would that just be for them to look at it and see what needs to be done?
That's second one. That's why we haven't engaged with them.
That's just one.
Well, I wonder if you might wanna switch me. Server companies. Then could I build it from there from just a, maybe that's the thing to do on their SSL. It's just, uh, then maybe the easiest solution. I'll just need to look at it. I mean, I, I have logged into your, your Go Daddy account though, and I saw nothing that was expiring except for two of your URLs in, in March.
Yeah.
I mean, I have viewed this, so. I don't know. I'll look at it again.
It'll be good news.
Um, we do need to figure out what we're gonna do with the Eagle County course. I know Jake's gotten that contract sent to him like four times, waiting on answer, but obviously we wanted to wait till we got YouTube sorted to really hit that, hit that one. Um, I don't have the contract, you can look at it for a while. Yeah, I'm like, well, that was, she sent it to me eight times. Move on off. But we'll be looking at, uh, remember purchasing, this is supposed to be under. We'll be looking at purchasing two chargers, two explorers and joint auto. And I, J-Bot pulled up, I think it was a forty five or fifty five thousand off the double chair. All together.
The explorers are by far the most expensive. They're running eighty thousand miles. They're some kind of hybrid or yellow like thereof. Um, they're telling us that they are in, um.
I can't actually pull it up, I'll send you. Okay, um. I can tell you, I just got the documents. So the explorers are fifteen thousand for one, and that one has eighty one thousand. And then fourteen five for the other. That one has eighty six thousand. And then the chargers.
You said there was two with four or just one?
Two. And then the charger, one of them is five thousand. That one has ninety two thousand miles and then the other charger has a hundred and eight and it's nine thousand. Oh. That's interesting.
Why is that not part of your coverage and yet they're asking?
For all these vehicles the same year? No, sorry. I guess I should have broke that down. So the explorers are both twenty twenties. Um, the five thousand dollar charger is a nineteen. That one, we were buying it knowing it's gonna need some work though. Um, that's why we're getting it for five thousand.
Well, specifically, that's Jennifer's next question.
I think that's the one that needs a head gasket, if I remember correctly.
What would it cost us to do that?
Uh, according to Ron, it'd be roughly four grand. So it'd put us right around nine grand in that car. By, which is what the other charger costs, which is why we went ahead and looked at it like that. Um, the other charger, that's nine thousand, that one is a twenty eighteen. And then the Tahoe.
Just out of curiosity, do they have another option for the chargers, one that didn't have a blown head gasket?
Uh, so we can look at it. We could look at a twenty seventeen. That one would have a hundred and six thousand miles on it. And it would also be
nine.
Eight or nine. They have two, so it'd either be eight or nine thousand for the twenty seventeen. I'm assuming eight, it could just be a typo on this, but.
They said they went through the, the one with the blown motor, they just went through and fixed everything else.
Yeah.
Um, that's why we're looking at it, because it would cost the same, but it would already have a good front end.
Yeah. That one, yeah, that's, so they had done regular maintenance on it, and then I think the patrolman that talks to me, or the deputy that talks to me, I guess, he said that they did all the maintenance and like a month later it's on the head gasket. So that's why I was like, well, if we can buy the same price as the other one, it might not be that bad.
And then I cut you off before you can tell us about the Tahoe, sorry.
The Tahoe. In twenty twenty, hundred thousand miles. And then eleven thousand. So they're all fully outfitted. Really? They would literally just be sending them to get our decals put on them. Yeah. Um. And it.
We get a local.
I don't know, but we would do our decal though.
Uh, talk to Peter Black. I've had some conversations with him.
So he would still have to buy our decal through the company that would go through to Denver anyways.
Well, and that's what I told my one, we have conversations with you to see what the process was for getting decals and if it's something that would be feasible, but if we can try to bring that back home and keep money local.
The reason we do it at Art Works, they are, was the price.
Sure.
Ten thousand bucks, I think, if you're pushing it to a little less. Um, the price was basically unbeatable and the cars are already there.
Sure.
Um, when fade to black, they were charging a little bit more to strip the car and decal it. And they were just charging us to decal the car. Um, so it was cheaper, but we'll reach back out to fade to black and as long as it, if it's we, we try not, if it's ten percent higher, we'll go local. If it's over that, which it was at the time, um, then we just go for the cheapest.
Okay, we'll see if we can get some more contacts for locals too, because I know there are a few other places that do decals. But I don't know price wise where they're at or anything like that, but if we could just try to get some posts.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely look at it, but there's a ninety percent chance they have to get the decal through Art Works anyways, which is what it is on that deal. Um, just because we do go with a specific gold decal, something like a mustard yellow or, you know? So there is that, that could cause a hiccup, I don't know.
Yeah, no, we'll research.
Bring it. Um. See, anyways, they would go to Art Works for, I think it is like eight, eight hundred or nine hundred bucks is what it comes out to. I'd have to pull up one of your invoices.
Um, but we do, we usually bring them back to Tim there. We bring them back to fade to black.
Gary does all of our windows.
Because the prices, I think fifty bucks from Gary and forty bucks through them. I, I mean, it's but that way we're still doing a little bit of local.
Um. And then they would go to uh. Lights, who does lights?
That's it.
AppTech. So part of the reason why we use AppTech is they help us facilitate the movement of cars. So like a lot of times they'll actually go to Eagle for us, or the Eagle guys will bring to AppTech, because they're in Golden, or Weebridge, sorry, they're in Weebridge. Um, so we go to Art, or to AppTech, they'll check and make sure the existing lights are all working, if there's like one for us lost there. And then they'll take it to the Art Works to get decals, and then they'll go back to AppTech and they'll hold the car until we can get up there for you. So they do help us a lot with facilitating movement up there, so we're not sending people up there.
And then when we go get cars, I can pull them apart and I'll hand it to them, give them the keys and they'll go.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing we did start doing is we do have Ron go through the cars and just make sure that they're, they are safe to drive. Um, Eagle no longer does that for us specifically. Um, mainly their other cars they're selling for thirty five thousand, they, they, they did sell two other Fords. I believe one for forty and one for thirty five thousand, both with more mileage and older cars. So they, they do offer us because we're four counties. So an amazing deal. Each car is outfitted between twenty one and twenty eight thousand dollars worth of equipment.
Yeah, I mean, we did have, we had tech, right? Because AppTech's one who left the some starts, which is part of the reason why we started doing it anyways, preparing you the car. And they can get you the programming, and so we can do some of the work, but there are certain things that AppTech has to do when we're within warranty to stay in place, so.
Um, we will have the ability to sell six cars, we think. Um, the, the thing we can't is the last year, we won fifty, which was probably our highest selling car now as a blown something or another. Um, so it's not gonna, the cars we're gonna sell, I can't guarantee they'll make any money. Um, I'm sure I would
taking a gander, right, shooting the dark here. Do what I know on how some of our other cars are going properly, if I think we can recoup at least the cost of one of them. With six cars and one that would probably get between fifteen and eighteen thousand. Um, but again, it's an auction site, so I could be totally wrong, but that would just be my, my education, yeah.
I think those cars, you know, they're just dead watches to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably you were, I think you mentioned we're still paying insurance on them, so it's just it's just an expense we don't need.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we would give it of, um, the wrecked ones, well, the older wrecked ones that we're not fixing, so that would be a twenty twelve Tahoe, we have a twenty sixteen Tahoe with a blown motor that we would sell. We're, we're parting it out right now, so we're taking certain parts that we know are still good and putting it on our other sixteen Tahoe. Um, to try to offset some costs. I think you went in there the other day. While they were fixing one of our damaged ones.
Oh, sixty two.
Yeah, we, uh, one of our deputies had a hit a, hit another vehicle. And we should CSP investigate and me and all that, but it was a sixteen Tahoe, so we have that blown sixteen Tahoe, and so we took all the body parts off that and were able to fix this, so. We're just paying labor on them, and that, that's all we're doing on that one. But anyway, so I have a twenty eleven Tahoe, a twenty sixteen Tahoe, twenty fifteen Ford F-150. Um.
Twenty thirteen Dodge Charger.
Thirteen Dodge Charger. And then I think we were looking at one of the, no, two of the twenty fourteen Tahos that we would give it. So that's what, five cars, six cars? So.
And one of the fourteens has a questionable.
Yeah, we've been running, take it away and try to, went a little while longer, so.
So we're going to attempt, if, if we were approved to purchase the five vehicles, we're gonna probably replace six vehicles. Um, we still want two on the chopping block that might make it to the end of the year, we're, we're hoping.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Um, there's still gonna be two control vehicles that are almost approaching two hundred thousand miles. And they, I'm guessing by the end of the year will approach two hundred thousand miles. That is replacing the oldest and most mileage cars from B D S line.
Yeah. No. So like I said, not to, not to rush you guys or, or press you too much, but Eagle County, that's very following me up.
And the reason behind that is I actually talked to him because she sent me so many documents. Um, is there are four other people calling interested in the two Fords specifically. Um, they're a hot selling commodity, so they're looking at selling them in the next two weeks if we do not pick them.
Yeah.
The chargers are pretty well sealed, especially the broken one, nobody wants it. Um, but they have sold every other car to my knowledge.
Of course. Um. So we move on, passing the followers. Did you have a?
Adrian has any more questions?
Yeah, you have any issues, questions on cars, we'll move on.
Well, my timeline and media is pretty short.
We probably need to do this week.
I may come out of here.
Okay, so.
Probably two weeks.
We need to make it a point in our next work session to kind of sit down and hammer out where our questions are and what our thoughts are, and so we can give them direction on how to move forward, so.
Anything else on cars?
But I have your number.
Okay. Yeah, that is true. Um. So our pay this last pay cycle, so one ten would have been updated. Um. They, they were, there was mistakes on, on pretty much everybody's pay, but I think it was due to confusion on how to pay in Sean's defense, so um, a lot of the guys didn't get our full number of base hours, or our base hours is eighty six hours before we have overtime. So like I have this one where we have sixteen, or sixty two hours of base pay. This one is sixty seven hours of base pay, fifty nine hours of base pay, and sixty five hours of base pay. She did, made up the hours, but it was all in overtime. So.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, we have like sixty two hours of regular pay and sixteen hours of OT, and I think we figured it out to where um, they were getting paid overtime Um, they were getting paid overtime on each day. So if they went over, you know, on, on Monday, they got the overtime for that day. Um, rather than doing eighty six and then overtime after eighty six, I think is where we ran into the issue, um. And then like one specifically, it's actually Stephanie's where she got sixty seven hours of regular pay. No overtime to offset it and then twenty hours of holiday pay, which. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, but holiday pay is completely separate, those are hours that we get. Period for a whole.
I thought there was some differential.
There is on holiday, there's no weekend or nights, but there is holiday. So. So and, and that, that arises another one of my concerns as to why I have not turned in these letters of, uh. Or my swearings to the clerk is we are actually Stephanie, the only one I legally can't. Put on the eighty six hours because she does not fall into the law enforcement exemption, even if I swear in, she fell under, on her job description. She's on the exemption.
I've been told that she is sworn in as a lieutenant and so it does put her under the exemption, is that not accurate?
No, no, you have to be, your jobs, your job description has to be law enforcement related, not.
But is it accurate to say that she is not listed as administrative, that she is listed as a lieutenant?
She's an administrative lieutenant. So everybody.
If she's not categorized properly in order for her to be exempt.
Yeah, so the, the law doesn't specify what rank or title you hold, so we're just a sheriff's office, everybody hold a rank or a title of some sort, just so. Everybody in the chain of command knows, um, but the law enforcement exemption, I'm still waiting on conference to, we, we, we have all swearings done, I believe. Um, but I'm waiting on conference because I still don't know if we can law enforcement exempt the dispensaries either. If we can, it's going to be on the jail, but we can't on Stephanie, we give, she does not fall under it, even if I swear in today, I give her the best title in the world. Unless I give her an equal description, she can't fall under that. But I, I don't understand how she has no swearing from the county yet, we can put her on it. Um, they, they, they don't have anything on her. So she gets put under it, but you, you need it on everybody else and they can't be put under it, that doesn't make any sense to me, why is she singled out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just told that she was sworn in and I didn't, so I don't have all the details on whether or not. What paperwork they have or don't have, but that's a conversation we need to have and we need to get it figured out on what.
We don't get me wrong, the guys are happy.
Well, here, if there's a sitting up, you're going, uh, you want a new car, well, get just spent that in overtime.
Yeah, and, and we did not spend that in overtime. None of our guys actually worked at the overtime, so if, if this, this mistake happens again. We will be over budget and it's not successful. Like they, they didn't work the time, this is a hundred percent A. And you can't take the money back away from them and say, hey, we overpaid you last month, so we're going to take it from this, the law doesn't work that way.
What do you guys think about in our work session, having Sean come in and Stephanie come in, so we can figure out a system for Stephanie getting. Hours every week and seeing where everybody is sitting, so that way when we do run into real overtime problems, we can be on top of it. You guys think that would be something beneficial?
Yeah, that's something we need to discuss. What would you do for better again?
Yeah, so if we can maybe throw it on your schedule for Tuesday. We'll figure out time and everything and.
This Tuesday?
Next, well, because today is Tuesday, so do you want to tell Lucy? You'll be gone, okay.
Should we learn something?
Yeah. We'll get it figured out, we'll figure out a time that we can.
Yeah, how long is your conference?
I am leaving Sunday evening and I won't be back until Wednesday evening.
We've got a meeting Thursday, so.
Yeah. Unless you guys wanted to add in another work session to meet with her while I am at orientation.
Might be the best to do is to focus on that in a work session. I assume that's what we're going to do anyway. But you schedule a different day.
Maybe, we need to, if we need to to get on it and we just need to talk to Sean and see what she's able to do, you know, she's still on leave from her surgery.
This one seems out, out of sorts, I'm learning.
Yeah, this is not a, a normal thing, but we can't have it happen again, this is going to dent our overtime budget without.
Yeah, doesn't do either, either one of us any good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, the staff, the staff are all really, really happy with you guys, but. Yeah, we. Yeah.
Especially on the nine one one.
Yes, and they're all, it's a clerical mistake or issue. Um, but I, I don't think it's Sean's fault, but I mean, we probably could have caught that if there was more eyes on it before the checks.
That's kind of my biggest thing is I know that we need to be able to have some kind of checks and balances where yours being. Numbers and what's happening and so we can have these questions before checks go out, exactly. You guys can just let me know if you want to meet some other time.
Because you don't get back to conferences until every Friday evening.
Friday evening.
Sunday at six.
One day it.
I would probably quit working in Monday before she left, no, you leave Sunday.
If you come back on Friday, then the next one, everybody will be.
There's a holiday.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I was gonna say, you can't work holidays now. Yeah, we could discuss it with Sean. We need any further info. So it's going like that all the time.
I know, I just wanted to point this out, so when, whenever you guys yell at me about overtime.
It was going to be a question.
Yeah, I, I figured.
Yes, we did have some questions about, about the overtime and that, just pay in general, so.
Also, speaking of pay in general, um, we have three rookies that make nineteen dollars an hour, um, even if their minimum on their pay scale is twenty fifty. Um, but they're still know that their minimum, so they've been now operating for two pay cycles.
Do they normally have a six month trial period before they go into that or how does that hurt? However, they started out at nineteen instead of their minimum.
So they're, a jail max is nineteen, um, then they went to patrol, when they got moved to patrol, they never got an increase.
Uh, they, so. To help you out was where I think your question is going to is when you're in the academy, you get put on the stipend and that stipend is that nineteen an hour. So once they graduate, you typically bump them to that twenty fifty and then that way they're at least. Getting paid while all the other deputies are getting paid and then once they're done with FTO, we usually look at bumping them. Into the high side of the deputy page, so. Which they're about. Probably about halfway through the ticket right now.
So we would at least just, I, I would eventually like them to be on the high side because everybody else is paying now a dollar and a half more than we are. Um, at our highest, so I would just like them at least to be on our pay scale, that way they're not making substantially less than everyone's.
The one thing I do want to be careful about though is that taking your rookies that just came out of the academy and putting them on the same or higher pay scale than any of your other guys. Let's just be careful that we don't, in order to retain our rookies, we don't irritate our veterans there.
No, no, so our, our patrol staff ones who've been here make twenty one and a half. Um, that's the high end, so the way our pay scale works is it starts out at twenty dollars and fifty cents an hour for patrol, that's what you start at. Then you go to twenty seventy five after you're competent ish in training and then when you're completed with that TO, we bump you up to the twenty one. So it's usually a three or four month, uh, cycle, and that's why it's only a fifty cent pay basis.
Yes.
Um, but the, the cycle, the, the start of the pay scale is twenty fifty, the approved pay scale from last year. Um, the, the start of it for them should be twenty fifty, but we're underpaying them like a dollar fifty.
We will. Have that on the.
On the work session?
Work session discussions and. So that we can update them on the. Yeah. Hope you'd look at. Anything else?
At least, at least one, I mean, more than one would be ideal, um, to have our credit cards back, um. When our guys do go to training. We have nothing to give them to go on, so everything is out, all out of pocket for them at that point. That's what we use the credit card mainly for, um, we also use to pay like our website stuff and different things like that. So if we could at least look into getting. A couple would be great.
In, in a perfect world, it would be nice for the three of us and Steph to have a card and then have a training card, because then we can track who's spending a lot where. So this way, when you came to me and said, hey, why is there a three hundred dollar purchase on, you know, Jay's car, I would say, well, guess what? You gotta ask Jay, right, so we can see who spent it right away, we're not sitting there second guessing, going back, trying to track who did what. Um, so that's, that's kind of what, what our idea was on it, now granted, it might not be feasible, but that's just something that we were, we were thinking about. But if we could at least have like an admin card. And a training card, kind of bear going, and that training card go with the guys when they go to training and I could say, okay. Whatever's on this card was spent, that's why we have a, you know, a, a weed bridge charter, whatever, wherever the train is at. So then the admin card would stick with, with Stephanie and she would track the admin.
No, it's a little bit easier to track it because we have to do reimbursements anyways. So I can just pull up the statements and start typing in what I need to instead of finding receipts and tracking it that way, it's just.
But usually all those guys bring me those receipts, so like normally before I would attach all the receipts with a credit card, um, invoice. And, and that's how I turn it all in, so you could actually see everything was broke down and where it was and what was.
Well, that's our work session too, that we can discuss our thoughts on. On the credit cards.
I know we talked a little bit about. Post reimbursements and kind of how that works and what we need to do as a whole in order to make sure we're getting all those reimbursements. But that's another thing with that training card, part of the reason why we like one is because all that will get reimbursed through post as long as we're. Doting our eyes across our teeth during. But that would help us out mainly him because he does a lot of the submissions for reimbursement on major sure that we're getting that one back. And you're not looking at us like, why are we spending so much money on training right now?
Yeah, we had a couple of drafts or checks. In December that. We kind of assumed were. Post. From the state and it was. Regarding the sheriff's office and then one was. Like two fifty and one gets two twenty five, but that's the only ones that we've seen throughout the year, so.
Yes, so as we've discussed in the past, this year we did not reimburse hardly any post-trainings. Because the bill must be paid within thirty days. Um, but, yes, so after the training is completed, the bill must be paid in thirty days, then we submit the training. And this year we were lucky to get bills paid three months down the road, maybe four. So post denied our reimbursement because of lack of payment. So that, that on like. Every training we went to. Both.
I don't remember any post checks at all.
That you wouldn't have came through, so, so the way post works is I send Jay to a training, we pay for the training. We submit that check to post saying, hey, we paid for this, they submit us a reimbursement check. Because we had no check to send them or we sent it late, they denied the, the check.
Right, I'm just wondering when I got the bill.
You would have got it the same day, with Stephanie's.
We need voices every week.
Because we, we checked New York for anything for the Otero Junior College.
No, that's totally, it's, if I send somebody in that class.
Like you'll get A L S, we send a lot of people.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to catch anything or anything else, I'm just wondering what, I mean, because when I get something and I'm told that it's, it's important. And that I do need it right away, I, I deal with it that day, I mean, that's what I do. And I'm not one hundred percent sure. When those ones came across my desk.
So ninety percent of the time it's if the buying, I set somebody up for a training, um. As soon as that company that we're doing the training with sends me an invoice, it's, I send it to you and to her. And if I don't send it to you, I at least send it to her and I know she tracks and sends it to you, right? Um, within, within a day of qualifying, um, which I would know we do that. Part of the reason why you probably don't recall getting a lot of trading invoices last year was because after the first. I will call once a year, we had submitted three of them and we weren't getting them paid in time, so we weren't getting them reimbursed. And we sat down and talked about it and said, well, if we're not being able to give you reimbursement, we can't send everybody trains like we want to do. So we didn't send, um, people to as many trains.
After May, when I got hired is when I, we weren't getting as many.
Yeah.
And that's why. Yeah, this was my question, I'm like, I'm like, because I swear, if I got something like that, maybe I was probably, it was vital. I absolutely would have paid it much quicker. And we, we, plus, I mean, I remember seeing like some late fees on, on certain bills, but then that ended after like my first one, one or two months a year.
And we started seeing late fees too.
So I think we need to just acknowledge the fact that there has been a lot of changes between different conditions and people learning their positions. And so at this point, we are starting fresh and we need to open up lines of communication and make sure that we are getting all of this stuff figured out. Where it's not an issue, we are getting our reimbursement, we are paying late fees. It's, we just, we all need to work with the team to be on top of it and making sure that it doesn't happen again. So I don't want to, there's no blame to put anywhere, there's just been a lot of changes that have happened throughout all of the different offices. And now we've got to come together as a team and fix it.
Which might be a good idea to have, instead of having a work session with Stephanie and Sean and then having one with this and Sean. If we could, we should schedule a day with the sheriff's office and we could go through all of these. Problems, because I mean, we're, we're one of your largest entities that you are unfortunately have to deal with. So if we could get something scheduled with you guys, um, on a work session basis where we could hash all those out and actually get it figured out, it would probably be beneficial.
Yeah, it's not a situation when it's us against you, it's.
No.
I don't, you are too trying to. Work together and, you know, maybe some compromising, we know that, so it's.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, uh. Mister De, De Cola.
Okay, yeah, I, I will say that there will be a public, uh, uh, public time when you guys can ask questions of the county commissioners. This is a county commissioner meeting, it is not a press conference for the sheriff's department. So at this, at this time, it, it is not time for the public.
Or is it, well, we are. We have the McLean School District for ten thirty or eleven, okay, so they're okay. Do you have any more questions for us?
Yeah. Like overtime, any other weird things in the budget that we didn't catch?
Now, just. Like I said, we did, definitely did notice the pay issues as well, and the overtime and. That was a really big concern.
Yeah, yes.
And, uh. So. Like I said, we. Jennifer is going to be gone the rest of the week. For. Uh, but we will discuss a lot of these issues that. You raised and see what we can do on our end to. Get it worked out and if. Then we'll contact you. Get the, the two of us together, so.
In the meantime, we're going to try and work with Sean, um, usually to just get on our pay scale, usually we don't come to you guys. Um, just, we're, we're going to try and work with Sean to get our, our deputies all to be appropriate pay. Um, so I don't have rookies quitting because they're making jail pay when they, but we have a pay scale for a reason at least. Um, we will be asking for a new pay scale, we will not be doing that today. Um, it will be soon, but we're asking for a longevity pay scale, not for an increase this year. Um, but we're, we are, we are going to ask for an increase this year, are we expecting one? No, we're going to ask for it. Um, but we are looking at the longevity pay to work, you stay three years, we give you an extra dollar an hour, you stay seven years and so on and so forth. Um, we did present to commissioners in. December. November, somewhere in there.
You brought it in when your, your first.
Budget meeting.
Budget meetings, yeah.
So we will present that to you guys as well.
Try to work with Sean and Linda both to figure out what exactly needs to be done for the swearing in and certifications, or we can get all of that recorded.
I, I don't know, that, that's, that's the problem is that we, we're, we're not, we're, we don't have Stephanie's, but she's already on the law enforcement exemption. So I don't know, I don't know what.
I will. Get us in trouble too, so.
That's what I'm assuming. We may end up owing Stephanie some. For three years would be my guess. So I, I, I did reach out to um our lawyer, our, our collective and just ask some questions. Um, I'm gonna hopefully get back in touch with him, but my assumption right now is we are more than likely going down to backseat Stephanie. But as far as I know, um, if, if they're on the exemption and legally can't be, that's why I'm not, look, I don't wanna switch dispatch yet. Um, because dispatch is very gray as to whether or not they can classify as the law enforcement exemption. The jail and the road, we're fine, I'm saying. Um, Stephanie, we are not fine. Dispatch is gonna be. I wanna find out if there's more sheriff's offices that do dispatch that exempt them. But we redid them all. They all have notaries. We're waiting on a couple still that.
There's a couple night shift ones, I think that I haven't, our paths are just not crossed. I don't have the right time, but.
But that they should be done and ready for us really, really soon. Um, then at conference, I am gonna find out who I can and cannot exempt. It, it's a strength. Anything else for us? Happy birthday. Sorry to hit you with everything all at once. But I'll have the staff, thank you.
Hey, alright.
Thank you guys. Good to see you, Gori.
Jack and.
Was that in yours?
Pretty sure Jack I. Where's Jack? Okay, well, I just asked him to unmute, I thought. I'll ask him again.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Awesome, thank you, yeah. Yep, uh, I just talked to Brian.
Yeah, I know that. He's had it up from uh when. Soon as we're done with this, then the public comment will come up and we'll be able to get him in, okay. Go ahead, sorry about that.
Oh, you're waiting on me?
Yeah, yeah, we just getting an early start.
Okay, well, I was just, I was just uh. Joining virtually until our superintendent got there. Um, she was planning on being there by eleven, so. I know, I just spoke to her on the phone and so she's on her way up there now.
Fantastic. And now do we want the public?
So I'll go ahead and.
Uh, need to specify that we're saying we're in your time mutes on the public comment.
Yeah, two minute.
Okay, so.
Okay, John, I've already opened you up, so that, yeah, there you are.
At one time, Linda kind of had that, or at least had, when we, she was expecting a large turnout.
We just need to ask that they introduce themselves and say where they're from and. And then give them their time to make their comments.
Yeah, I think one, one minute, two minutes, whatever. Maybe it's a group.
However, these guys are kind of. I thought I already had you up there again. I've asked you to unmute, John.
We wanna kind of discuss. Let's just talk it out, make sure where you. All agreement as to how long and when and all that stuff.
You're, I believe you're unmuted, John. If you want to, go ahead.
Do you address them so we know that they can?
I said it twice, yeah, I've said it three times now.
There's been a lot of extra side talking going on, so I didn't know if they could hear.
No, John, just put himself on mute again. So I'll ask him to unmute one more time. Okay, I've asked you to mute the third time, so you can go ahead and unmute, John.
If you need, either that or lower hand.
Uh, when I lowered his hand, it dropped him over here. But he's currently unmuted. You may, you may need to uh, uh, disconnect and reconnect your audio. There's been a couple of people that had a hard time talking or hearing.
And also, if, if you're at the meeting and they had your name deal and you stand it up on the end or. Request time to talk. If you don't turn it back when you go down, then you owe that. I'd encourage you to remember. I don't know how well it's enforced, but that's, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Yeah, I, okay, I'm not sure where it's going. Anyway, sorry about that. Other than.
I think we've got everything covered except for.
I'm gonna go ahead and. All. Unmute themselves for the moment. They come back in here, they can unmute themselves, whoops. Let them start their video, of course. And unmute themselves.
There. So John DeCola wants to meet, go in the meeting room, so he had to admit. I do have it set, John, so you can go ahead and unmute yourself. I'll see if we can hear you this time.
Can you hear me, okay?
Now we can hear you, yes, go ahead.
I, I, I'm curious, who sets the sheriff's budget for the year?
Uh, the county commissioners set the, the sheriff's budget.
So if the county commissioners are setting the sheriff's budget, is the, is the sheriff giving any input into that budget?
Yes, uh, each of the department heads come forward and they present what they request.
Okay, well, it kind of seems a little uh insane, because right now. He came in here, he's asking for two thousand dollars for, for a website. He's asking for money for cars. I mean, clearly you guys aren't budgeting correctly, either that or the sheriff's office isn't budgeting correctly. The other issue that I see is I had a, a uh, public record request that I did in late October, early November. And the request was for Ms. Northrup's salary and her last pay stub.
Who did you send that request to, John?
I sent that directly to the sheriff's office.
Okay, that is your problem there. The, 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 the record must be sent through the custodian, the official custodian.
I know what the CRS is for Colorado and under twenty-four seventy-two, two hundred. I can request it by email, I can request it by snail mail, and I can give it to any government employee.
However, if you want, uh, if you want to actually get a response, uh, you should send it through the official custodian. And that would be the county police office. Uh, if you go to bencounty.net, there's a form there, you can fill it out.
I don't have to do that. That is up to Ms. Northrup to send it to the proper person and then they would send it to me. That hasn't happened. That means that the sheriff's department is in violation of the core laws. That's another issue. But again, going back to the sheriff and all this money, we're talking about. You guys are talking about giving him two thousand dollars, you're talking about giving him new vehicles. I mean, when does this end? How much money?
Okay, with all due respect, John, yeah, go ahead.
With all due respect. He was coming in here and he was making requests to a brand new board of commissioners. You know, Phil and I were just sworn in this morning. So we didn't. Talk about giving anything to him at this point. We said that we will have to sit down at the board and we will have to discuss these things. And figure out what the actual needs are and what we are capable of doing. So at this point, it was just requests being made to a board, but we are in a position to make any decisions today.
I think that the board should also look into the two hundred thousand dollars worth of checks that were written on the former chairwoman's. Uh, dime, because there's a lot of questions as to where that money went and who wrote those checks, because according to the chairwoman, she didn't. So maybe somebody should be looking into that money that disappeared and where it went. There's a lot of problems here. And then, and I'm glad that the new board is here to try and correct those problems and move forward, and that's what we're hoping that you guys are gonna do.
And we would just ask that you give us the time to be able to do the research and start digging in and figuring out what actually is going on. Because until today, we have been sitting in the same position that you are all in. We have been on the outside looking in and just getting little bits of information. So now is our time to really start digging in and figure out what has happened and what needs to be done to move forward. I mean, we are here for the people of Bay County. We wanna serve them and we wanna serve them well. So we just ask that you give us a little bit of patience and time to be able to get our feet set and underneath us, so we can start digging into all of this.
Yeah, and, and you know, and that kind of brings me to another point too, because you guys have a lot of, uh, there was, uh, I believe I have a video of at least. Four military vehicles, maybe that DMR contract, the DR. DRMO contract that you folks had, maybe you should send them back. I mean, maybe you can get some money back that way, who knows? I mean, at this point, they're just sitting over at the shop. Where, where the other vehicles were supposed to be getting fixed. I mean, somebody's got to do something. I mean. At some point, the money has to stop. Getting put out and the taxpayers need to stop paying for these things that are keep adding up. Not to mention the fact that, if I remember correctly, a few months back, there was a female prisoner that walked out the front door of the jail. The, these are, these are issues that should be addressed.
We addressed some of those this morning. They've got some vehicles that are salvage vehicles only. We're going to try to sell them as much money as we can. We are trying to replace some vehicles every year. We don't, we're not buying new vehicles. It's used vehicles. The newest ones are twenty twenty models. So we're not just throwing money out on new vehicles and we're trying to cut corners to save the county money. So I, I think that's all anybody can ask right now.
Well, we appreciate that and we thank you for at least going that far. So thank you and I appreciate the time. You guys have a great day.
Uh, yeah, Jack. We're asking you to unmute, Jack. Yeah, if I can get him there. Here, I'll just go ahead and.
It should be unmuted.
Yep, hear you and. Teal, wherever you are.
To the left.
It's good, it's, she's already unmuted. I, I, I said it so they really could unmute themselves so that. That could be.
Okay, alright, wish for it.
Now that they're already open.
Okay, so. We have representatives here from the McLean School District and would. One more of you care to step up here where I can hear you?
Well, I am Brienne Howe. I know a few of you. Um, I'm superintendent of the McLean School District, so I'm excited to be here. And then I'm, I imagine you can see I'm the principal. And Lisa Schotter, I'm from Southern Colorado Economic Development District. I am the program manager for the seven counties out here in Southwest Colorado. So our district was recently awarded a best grant and um, we just found this out here a couple of months ago. And so now we're in the process of um, getting going with everything that we need. And so one of the pieces that's really important is that we took out our baseball field um, out of the best grant. So the district is going to fund that solely. And um, in our original application, the baseball field was included as part of the best grant, but in order to make it more competitive. We took the baseball field out and so that is now something that the district is solely looking to fund themselves. So there are several grants that we have applied for. Um, and I have a list of those, so I just wanted to share those with you guys just so you have them. Um, we've already applied for the land and water conservation fund grant. Uh, we've applied for a major league baseball grant, a Daniels Foundation grant, and we are currently looking to apply for a GOCO grant. And so um, school districts aren't able to directly apply. Um, they have to be able to partner with another entity. And so we are here asking today, if you guys would work with us, we would also be partnering with our recreation, Bay County Recreation Department. Um, to do this grant as well. And so basically, um, with it. All matching funds, they would come from either the school district themselves or from other grants. We're hoping to get this entire field covered from grant funds. That's why we've applied for so many. Um, but any matching funds that would come from any of these grants, they would either come from other grants. Or um, our school district itself and basically you guys would be just the kind of. The flow through and um, Lisa, I think can speak to more on what sort of job duties they might not, they might have, but um, it is very minimal. It's mostly just you would be partnering with us to apply for this GOCO grant.
For the GOCO grant, the school district is not an eligible entity, but the county is, towns are. Since McLean is a not, unincorporated town, they can't apply directly themselves. So the only eligible entity is the county to apply for. Um, then if the grant is awarded, the county can designate somebody else as the fiscal agent, whether it's a school district or SCAD. To manage the account of the grant award, so that there wouldn't be any additional burden on the county for that. Um, as part of the grant, you have to, you write it such that the county is the entity applying and the main partners are the district, the rec district. Uh, the community of McLean.
So with the award of the best grant, we do have a pretty strict timeline that we're on. This um, season of spring and summer of twenty twenty-five will be the last season that we'll be utilizing the current field that we have. Then our new school, our pre K through twelve replacement will be built on our existing ball field. And so then we are looking to relocate that current ball field to a section that, of land that the school district owns. And so it's just a pretty quick turnaround. So the next concept narrative that's due for GOCO is January twenty-third. And we know, we knew ahead of time that we wanted to apply for this, but we wanted to wait until the new commissioners. Had taken over because we didn't, you know, we, we just felt like you were the ones we would be partnering with, so we wanted to make sure that change had taken place. So that's kind of the timeline that we're on for right now. Um, looking to go for the next round of funds with GOCO.
And if we get to the concept level, uh, the concept letter stage, we pass that one, then we'd be eligible to apply for the full application. That's due February sixth and then. Uh, now that it opened February sixth, I'm sorry, and closed March sixth and we hear in June whether we got that grant, which should align pretty well with. Breaking ground for the ball field and the other grants that we've applied for already. Uh, if we get to the full application part, we would need a letter of resolution from the board saying, yes, we're applying for this. We approve that we're moving forward.
You, the bottom line, you. In Austin County. Yes, you wanted to emphasize right there.
I've been writing the grants for the school district and um, and I'll come back before you in later date. I've been writing the grants for the school district and, um, and I'll come back before you and later date as a representative from SCED to explain what SCED is. But as a dues-paying member of the district, the grant writing services of SCED are free to the county and municipalities. Not free to the school district. But if you, if you apply for GOCO under the county, then those grant writing services are also. Great, uh, the grant administration services, we can build into the grant budgets and we have for some of the other ones. So that if the district feels that those grants are beyond their capacity, SCED could do the management of them. But right now, they're doing the management of them since they're charged and constructed.
So what happens if you don't get the GOCO grant? Just.
I mean, we're just.
The rest of it yourself.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the district is playing on whatever grant funds we don't receive that comes out of our.
Right.
Pocket.
Right.
And we're continuing to, continuing to look for other grants as well. You know, just offset, just like everywhere, budgets are tight everywhere. We're trying to get the least amount out of our general fund. But our board is supportive and there's some board members on here that they're supportive of, of finishing the amount of this. And that we took that on when we changed things up for the best grant. Right.
So, you know, best case scenario, the school would get the best grant, which would save the taxpayers and the school a lot of money right there.
The GOCO grant.
Yes.
Ideally, we get all the grants we can apply for. And we've written the other grants as a kind of stack. You are asking for this much for this grant and we're applying for this other grant for this amount to kind of.
I've heard of this one here particular, particularly competitive nowadays.
Yeah.
At Daniels Foundation.
Yes.
And so it's a difficult one to grab.
So do you have a ballpark figure that you're looking at from GOCO?
Um, you have those. The other three, because before, you know, we had applied for GOCO, those had totaled the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars total that we were looking for. So that would cover the sole cost of the field, but you know, there's also good chances that.
Yeah, yeah.
Chance you won't get.
Right, um, so, you know, we haven't really talked dollar figures yet, but.
I mean, we tried to apply for the majority of that eight hundred and fifty. We had to talk to program officers, Sammy Trotter, and see how much typically GOCOs in the six hundred to eight hundred thousand range for these type of grants. So hopefully it would cover the remaining amount, but yeah.
They just got what, five hundred and eighty thousand grant for the city here, so. I don't know. For that. You know, what kind of shape that leaves them in it, so.
Right.
Well, I think it's a worthy cause when you even don't get it, I think it's important. You apply, but on these other grants, they, the school can apply for them themselves.
We already have. The Daniels, uh, we've done a background work for that and the way the Daniels likes to fund is wait. And they look at that final twenty-five percent. That's why their number is less. Um, so that's kind of in a holding pattern right now with the Daniels, but I mean, we have communications with them and have been working with them through this entire process. So that money is a little bit flexible to their, that amount. Those are estimates. Some of them.
Okay, coming through our next meeting, so. And this is definitely something we want to. Talk about in a work session so we can figure out what's. What's available and.
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is next Thursday.
Yeah.
Which is the twenty-third.
So we're, we're best for time.
Yeah.
The next cycle then probably would not be until, if they keep with their usual, would be August. Which gives us more time, but it gets us out of alignment with the construction of the cycle.
Yeah.
We realize.
Again.
Yeah.
But again, if you don't. Say you don't get the Daniels and you get the other two, then GOCO. Money can come in at a later date and take care of it. And if worst case scenario, you don't get any of them, then GOCO is looking at all project and. So. Then, then it does become definitely a rush, so. But anyway, but it is something we probably need to discuss with the.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Deal, so it'll be maybe all day next Tuesday.
That's what I was just gonna, like, it is gonna be a massive work session of, of going over things and, and giving us the opportunity to see, like you said, how does it affect?
Yeah.
The other grants that are already out there with GOCO and, and funding like that, but in seeing what, what our options are within.
So anyway, so we will.
Thank you.
Definitely discuss it. Next Tuesday and. Then. If we fit, then we can take action on it on Thursdays, right?
And then I'm just gonna go ahead and leave this concept narrative for our field just to have that as well. And this is kind of based off of the previous round.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
That we applied for and I kind of tweaked it, you know, the, the district's undecided on if we're gonna. Do mostly turf or have any sort of turf in that or if it's just gonna be more of a natural field.
Yeah, so what you need from them is to be a letter?
Well, it's just, no, it's, well, it's basically a res- a resolution by the February, well, the March date. But if they have permission to move forward, I can start doing the contact paper and.
That's something that they can probably do on that meet that, that date.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Depending on what happens.
A verbal.
So if you were to go for that GOCO grant, you'd go for the full eight hundred and fifty for that one?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll really do my business first. Again, I'll come to a later meeting and talk about SCED, but I have a new phone number.
Yeah, I'm gonna be, still be the rep.
Okay. And I'll come back at a later time into a work session and talk about what SCED does and.
I do have one quick question for you. Do you write grants for the sheriff's office? I mean, would you write, let, let, let's put it that way. Would you?
Yes, because they're part of the county.
Yeah, I, I pretty much do it, but I just wanted to get verification.
What about underfunded courts?
I didn't hear you, sorry.
So the courts, other thing about that, wait, well.
Basically, anything that the county is putting in for, you could write a grant. Okay.
Yeah.
And we can manage the grants too, if that is also a need.
Okay, and we probably, they probably wouldn't complain about that.
Yeah, yeah. You and I might become friends.
We could often do some long-range planning and. Think of that nature hazard mitigation.
I mean, somehow I am two for two, but they're small.
But.
You know, Lisa's working on a grant too for.
Yeah, hers is much larger and it's with the federal government, so that pays a whole lot more to steps.
And we do appreciate the work you've done with the bars.
But it is eating our policies updated because the feds require all sorts of policies.
Yeah, anyway, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming down again.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna break it out in a way and put it right in here.
I mean, the big thing is, uh, it, I wasn't telling you any, any about that thing, it just would be. Yeah, uh, the easiest path to a, a resolution on a, on a, same.
Do you have something you want to bring to the board or?
Actually, no, mine, I have a few things I'd like to mention.
Okay.
Part of me is not standing up. I didn't bring my cane.
Oh, okay.
Do I, I'll come sit?
You don't have to.
Might as well take advantage of a good board takes it down. My name is Terry Kim. I'm a resident here in Los Anamos, so I live at two sixteen Sixth Street, despite Doc White's old office. Uh, I'm also a former city council member here from Los Anamos and I'm still currently a city member of the. First off, I'd like to congratulate the new commissioners. I'm looking forward to dealing with, uh, more transparency and accountability for the agencies that fall under the umbrella. Of the commissioners. Thing I'm most concerned about right now is the way the sheriff's been conducting his business. Uh, I understand what you said to Mr. John, John Dimacola.
Yeah.
Does what it was. I understand his concerns and I echo those concerns, so therefore as a citizen of the town and the county, instead of an outsider. I want you to, you know, this is something, especially when I was on city council, we've been in a lot of issues. With getting transparency and accountability with.
No.
Every agency almost that falls under the county or the city even. Uh, like I would ask questions like, how many cars have they gotten in the past five years? Cause I know it seems like, and who's maintaining their cars? Why they blow up so fast? I mean, I remember, I just, these are just questions, kind of like when, what, during the pandemic span over here while I was sitting on, why do we guys on council quite yet? He was using the same thing. He wanted us to keep buying the same engine. It kept blowing up and he wanted to repair it for a third time, put in his chassis. Well, that's ridiculous, especially when he had a whole new box coming in that June. And then basically he said that if we didn't pay for it, he was going to, it would hinder his ability to provide service, which again, he backtracked on when we called him up. This is a continued pattern of behavior within these inter-county agencies that I've noticed over the years. And I think we're basically being pleased. And I think you should all be aware or, you know, it's your job. I'm sorry, I apologize. That was probably an incorrect word to use. But I think that, uh, it should be concerning that you have so many citizens in whole raising the same questions. About the same county ident entities. So I feel like that I'm really counting on this new commission to really take their oath. To the constitution of the state of Colorado and the constitution of the United States of America very seriously. And to understand that you're not here just to represent an individual or a specific group, but to represent the entirety of the county. Which includes the ominous mentality within the county, which you made note earlier in classes. Even a statutory city, you know, where it's hasty. And it doesn't get much lower than statutory cities. And we're the county. So those are just some things I wanted to address. I wanted to introduce myself to you all. I'm sure you probably are aware of me in one way or another. And if possible in this scope field, if I could talk to you as my, you're my, I believe you're my district representative.
District one?
Yes, right over here. Yes, if I can speak to you afterwards, please.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you all for your time. I appreciate it. And again, I congratulate you on your appointments and I'm counting on you all to do your jobs. So, thank you, sirs and ladies.
Thank you.
Oh, Charles, he raised his hand. Uh, I believe that you can unmute yourself, Charles.
Perfect. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yes. All right.
And unfortunately, now you can see me. Hi, congratulations. I, I thought it was a wonderful ceremony this morning. I, I, I don't have a lot to say. I just want to. Re- reach out to, to the commissioners and, and ask you to. We, we've been working on an IGA with the sheriff's department for several months now and not getting, not got too far on it. So I, I was just wanted to put my two cents in and say, you know, if we can light a fire under it and get it going, it would be greatly appreciated. We want to, we want to go about it with the right hand and the right way with everything. And we look forward to. To having a good working relationship with the, with the, the county and everybody. So again, that's it. Just thank you very much.
Yep. Fantastic.
Thank you.
And you, and Charles, you do have my number?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I know it's in mine.
No, I, I think I have everybody's except for Mr. Himkill.
You'll actually be getting new numbers for Phil and I as well, because there will be, uh, county numbers assigned to us.
As well, email addresses as well.
So we'll make sure we get you all that contact information when we get it.
That's awesome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
I have your computers all set up. I have your phone. Unfortunately, we had to order your phone because Kim didn't have one. Stop that. We, we have ordered your one.
All right. Anything else?
There anybody else want to say anything? Uh, I think we're good.
Yeah, Alicia.
I know how long it takes me to raise my hands on these things.
Doug, I've missed actively listening to a lot of this meeting. I apologize. I'm just curious when you'll post the recording on the, the website.
Uh, pretty much almost immediately after the meeting. I, I, I transferred onto a hard drive, go over to my computer and I, I get it up, uh, within a day. I mean, it'll be today.
Is it easy to find on there? I haven't looked.
Um, yeah, just go to the, go to the government page, go to commissioners and then there will be a link for, uh, posted or the video meetings as well as the minutes.
Okay.
The minutes, of course, get posted much later. They, they have to wait until they get, uh, approved or approved. But, uh, the mid, the meeting, I, I just, the video I put up, uh, that today, it'll be up today sometime.
Okay, great. Thank you. I, this was a big one. So welcome, welcome to your new job, folks. Um, I'll, I'll tune in and listen to the whole thing actively this afternoon. Appreciate it. You guys have a good day.
You too.
You too, Sam.
I don't have the sheriff's department.
Yeah. Well, I, I probably wait till the news over. I mean, I think you know more here.
Yeah. Hey Jake, did you have something?
Do you guys want to come back here?
Do I want to? No.
Did you have a reason? Okay.
Okay. So. Say no further business before the board? Meeting adjourned.
The recording has stopped.
End it.
All right, folks, that is that. The Ben County Commissioners Meeting. Let's see what this board does. Yeah, with this F to C. I mean. Yeah. I, I don't know. I got, I got hopes they'll do good, but we've seen it before, so. I don't, I don't lead their situation, that's for sure. It's all a big mess. It's a huge mess, but I, I hate to say it, but I think the biggest part of their mess is the sheriff's department and the fact that it's being run into the ground. That's just my opinion. It's, it's a terrible racket they got there, but. Like it's not even making money. Like that's what their, their jail was supposed to be to make money. They house all the surrounding counties inmates. It just, it doesn't, yeah, it's not good. Well, it's not. I, I would think Sugar City probably brings in more from handling trash than what. What, what Ben County does from their sheriff's department. We'll find that out soon enough. Just my. But yeah, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, every time you turn around, he's got his hand out for more money, more money, more money. It's like, wow. You would think if they, if they got together with the heads of the sheriff's department, that they would at least budget the, the year correctly. Uh, I, I'm, I'm at a loss. Listen, I understand emergencies arise and you need money, but this guy is just constantly asking for money. He's still waiting to get those air conditioners replaced. Yeah, yeah, right. Kind of like I'm waiting for my, uh, cora request from Stephanie Northrup, right? Oh, man. And you know, I, I gotta be honest with you, that guy, that guy cutting me off kind of pissed me off because you and I both know, I know those laws, the cora laws. And those cora laws specifically state it's their responsibility to send that to the proper person or the foyer officer to re- fill the request. And, and that's their duty, not mine.
And, and that's their duty, not mine.
Oh, oh, but, but their lawyer, their lawyer, oh Nate there, will back him up on what he told you. Listen, that's how pathetic they are.
Uh, again, this is, that's their problem and.
No, I have emails to prove it. Like I know it's factual. Like that's exactly what will happen.
If I remember correctly, I think I had a conversation with Nate at one point to the, where Nate got frustrated and hung up, if I remember correctly. So you know, when you talk sacks with the lawyer and you talk the law with the lawyer and the law contradicts what he says, apparently that's a, that's a no-go conversation for them. But you know, again, that's just my opinion.
They do what they want. Well, folks, we appreciate you guys coming in here. Appreciate you coming up, John. Um, I think, uh, the hunter has a meeting today at four P M. And you guys want to go attend that one? Um, yeah. Until the next meeting. Uh, you know, it seems like we're covering a lot of them lately, but we have to. You know, there's a lot of things said in that meeting that it's just nice to be there for. So yeah.
Well, thanks, folks, for showing up and have a great day.
All right, guys. Stay safe. We'll catch you on the next one.